Good evening and welcome to the January 7th, 2009 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of December 10th and December 17th, 2008. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have two public hearings scheduled for this evening, the first of which is a zoning request for approximately 1.32 acres along Rushwood Drive and South Church Street to be rezoned from RM 16 to Office General. Decker and Belt are the applicants. Ms. Ely, good evening.
Good evening to you, planning commission members and Chairman Lamb. As you stated, the request is for 1.32 acres, which is located on the eastern side of South Church Street and north of Rushwood Drive, to be rezoned from its current RM 16 zone, multi-family residential district, to OG, and that stands for General Office District. Currently, the Liberty Free Methodist Church occupies the site. To the west is the Jefferson Square Office Condominium Complex, which is zoned CH Highway Commercial District. The Bellwood Trace Apartments are adjacent to the property on the eastern lot line, and they are zoned RM 16. The properties to the south are zoned RS 8, Single Family Residential District, and are a part of the WA Rushing Single Family Subdivision. And also to the south is the Bellwood Mobile Home Park, zoned RMO, which is Mobile Home District. The request is to rezone 1.32 acres from RM 16 to OG to incorporate this property as a part of the Jefferson Square Office Condominium Complex. It would be Phase 4. The applicant has stated that his intentions are to remove the current church structure on the site and then redevelop the site. Although Jefferson Square Office Condominium Complex is zoned CH, the applicant has requested an OG zone because he believes that it will allow the anticipated users, but would restrict those that more intensive uses that are generally associated with the CH zone. The concept plan for the site shows three separate commercial buildings, which would be divided into condominiums, for a total of 15,519 square feet of building area. The property located directly to the south is 123 Rushwood Drive, and it currently serves as the parsonage for the church. The applicant is aware, and staff will make sure, that any ingress and egress to the site is only from South Church Street through the Jefferson Square Office Condominium Complex and not through that single-family subdivision. And according to the zoning ordinance, a type B landscape buffer is required between the OG and RS zones, so that would be expected along the southern lot line, and a type A buffer is required between the OG and RM zone, which is along the eastern lot line where the property, where the apartments are. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning this property from RM 16 to OG, General Office District. A representative of the applicant is here, and if you have any questions or would like him to elaborate, he will be glad to do that for you. Also, staff would like to answer any questions you may have, either before or after the public hearing.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant or his representative? And before we open the public hearing, in case you do want to come forward and speak, let me briefly go over the rules of the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. You'll be invited to come forward to speak either for or against the proposal. Please keep your comments to no more than three minutes and make all your comments toward the Planning Commission. If you have questions, we'll make note of your questions, and we'll ask the staff to try to address those questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forth. Please state your name and give your address, and come on forward if you'd like to come at this time. One at a time, please. Seeing nobody come forth, let me find the handy little -- I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments pertaining to this project? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Comments, questions? I'll make the public session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the proposed revisions to the Murfreesboro subdivision regulations. The City of Murfreesboro Planning and Engineering Department is the applicant. Mr. Ailock, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we're going to conduct a public hearing to gain public input on a project that we've been working on for about a year. Actually, this is a project that's probably well within the responsibility and purview of the Planning Commission. It's something that you have a unique responsibility for in our community, and that is the development of subdivision regulations, which will guide how land is developed in our community. This is not zoning. Zoning has to do with the lot size, the bulk regulations, placement of buildings on lots. This has to do with how public infrastructure is created and how the process of subdividing land is undertaken. A little over a year ago, the city council allowed the city to enter into a contract with Neil Schaefer, engineering consultants. They have helped us to formulate these subdivision regulations. Their first task in this project was to interview what we call stakeholders, and stakeholders include developers, builders, surveyors, engineers, and just ordinary citizens, people who will be responsible for administration, people who are involved in the process, people who will be affected by it. So that was our first project. They did something else. They did what I call a peer review. They took a look at other communities and how other communities address subdivision regulations. We embarked upon this in large part because we want to modernize the subdivision regulations. Now, there's two parts to the subdivision regulations, as I see it. The first part being the how-to, the process, the regulations about when a final plat is required, a preliminary plat is required, a master plan, and such. The other part is the design specifications. Usually, the design specifications are more technical in nature. Tonight, we're not considering the design specifications. We're going to save that for another night, and they're still in development. They're usually something that will impact cost, yes, but it's something that the engineers are usually a little bit more concerned about because it is the design part of the subdivision. The subdivision regulations we're considering tonight is the process part of the regulations. The city has had a couple of work sessions with the Planning Commission on this. We've sent this out back in the late summer to stakeholders, and not to every stakeholder, but to some of them that had been interviewed in the early part of the process, to make sure that we were on the right track. More recently, I sent it out as a more polished document, and then more recently than that, in preparation for this public hearing, I had it posted on our internet, and then I sent out quite a number of notices, trying to get people's attention. And I invited them to share this with others, to get their attention, so that everybody who may have an interest can know about it. We did advertise in the newspaper. That's just one part of notification, but it is the required legal part that we do advertise in the newspaper of general circulation. So we did that, but knowing that that's not going to be seen by everybody, we tried to get the word out, and we've tried to have some newspaper articles. I've seen them in the Daily News Journal, and with the Post, they've had some reporting. And of course, we have prepared a piece for Cable 3, but I don't think it's gotten out yet, so it may not have been a very effective tool. But later on, we'll be seeing it in preparation for the street specifications. One thing tonight, I'm not going to ask you to take action. What we want to do tonight is to get input. We're going to take notes. Also, tonight, I have distributed to you all the comments that I have received in writing, with the exception of one email that I received just before the meeting that I was unable to print. Basically, that comment reflects the comments that you have in writing before you. Anybody that was willing to give me something in writing, I forward it to you, whether it was an email, note, or a letter that was mailed to my office. Because, as I told people with my publication, that if they get it to me, I get it to you. And so with the exception of the one late arriving email, I've gotten you everything that I've received. Now, what we hear tonight, we're going to take notes, and I'm going to suggest to us that we don't want to take action tonight because some of the comments we're getting, I think, is going to require our staff to step back and evaluate what we've heard and how it might impact the regulations. After the -- we've evaluated this among staff, we may want to have a meeting with some of the stakeholders and maybe work through some of these items. I know that some of the items, particularly the issues of sidewalks, the engineer certifications, those are kind of things that we may need to have some dialogue with the people who may be affected. They may need to hear what my staff has to say, and we certainly would value what we could hear from them. After we've done that, we'd probably come back with some recommendations for changing this. Also, I want to tell you that I did receive some comments from Consolidated Utility District. They were what I would call very, very minimum in nature. They would affect the wording in some of the certifications for plats. As you may be aware, and many of the people who are in attendance tonight are aware, Consolidated Utility District provides water service in a big part of our community, but they are not regulated through the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department. So we may need to change the wording in some of the certifications that are in this because we need to reflect that they are independent. They also had in a couple of instances where their regulations may be a little bit more demanding than ours, so we want to make sure that we've sorted out any differences between our regulations. With that, I'd be glad to answer questions if you want to during the public hearing, but I'd really rather wait till after the public hearing, so I'm going to take notes. And then it may be that some things we'll just have to get back to at that later work session that I alluded to. So with that, Chairman Lamb, I'm back to you.
Okay. Any questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
Oh, one more thing. I want to put a copy of the subdivision regulations on the counter up here, so if someone needs to open it up, they'll have it available for themselves.
Chairman Lamb, just one comment I wanted to make and address with Mr. Ailock, which he's touched on. I think consistently, one issue that I've received a number of calls and concerns about is the timing regarding placement of sidewalks, and I think you've touched on that and realize you've gotten some of the same comments that I have, and that's something we're going to have to take another look at. Is that fair to say?
Yes, it is. Sidewalks, and you know, we've stated several times during my tenure with the planning department, and inside the city of Murfreesboro, we've never found the perfect recipe for sidewalks. And in talking with other planners, they struggle with that in every community that I've heard of, that I discussed it. So we're certainly willing to take another look at that, and that's one of the things I was alluding to. I think it may require some discussion. If we can come to a consensus on what's the best approach, if they understand our needs and we understand theirs, and we can find common ground, I think that's what you all would like us to do.
It is, and for the general public's benefit, would you explain basically what the two general schools of thought, the competing interest as to sidewalk placement we're talking about?
Well, there's actually three. The first, well, maybe four, but the first one is sidewalks for everyone in all cases everywhere. And then the other one is no sidewalks for nobody because nobody needs them or wants them. So that's the first two. The second two is the timing for when they're constructed, if we are going to have them.
And that's the issue I was alluding to.
And I saw some of my emails were a little bit on the other end. But if we're going to have sidewalks, when are they built? Are they built, in a residential subdivision in particular? Are the sidewalks to be constructed before the construction of the residence, and if so, by who? Or are they to be constructed afterwards? So that seems to be a part of the problem. The view is that if they're built before the house is built, that they will be damaged or destroyed to a critical degree during the construction of the house, thereby being wasteful if they're constructed on the front end, requiring extensive repair by the builder. On the other hand, if they aren't built before the house, then the, there's a problem of continuity of sidewalks, of timing, of when the sidewalk system's going to be complete because in some subdivisions, it may be years before all the homes are built, so there may be significant gaps in a pedestrian system, thereby decreasing the utility of the sidewalks. There also may be issues regarding the warranty period for a developer if the sidewalks are put off until the house is built. So it is a complicated system or a situation with sidewalks that I do think we want to be cognizant of all players before we come to a final decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keely. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name's Jim Avery-Water, and I'm here as representative of the Rutherford County Home Builders Association and their 350 or so member businesses. Want to address four items in the regulations in particular. So I'll go through them in chronological order. The first one's going to be 3.6 under construction of infrastructure and 3.10.2 warranty repair. Specifically, it's the use of the undefined terms of expeditious and timely. The regulations are worded to require a developer to move forward with construction in an expeditious manner and not prolong the construction process unnecessarily. While its meaning and its purpose is certainly valid, the use of the term expeditious or timely is so vague that previous court cases find that it won't stand up. To give you an example, in 2006, the Tennessee Court of Appeals, City of Cleveland versus Wade determined that an ordinance or regulation is unconstitutionally vague when a person of common intelligence must necessarily guess at its meaning. Tennessee courts have held that an ordinance which adequately quantifies regulatory requirement would satisfy that test. So since it's impossible to accurately define what expeditious is in the context of these subdivisions, I think that you should remove or revise this section to be certainly more specific because at some point, this will be challenged exactly what expeditious is going to be. Second issue is under 3.7, we touched on this just a minute ago, engineer certification of completion, which requires the engineer of record to inspect the construction and provide the city engineer a certification of completion. This is rather nonspecific as to the scope and the duties and requirements of the engineer. Is exactly what is it this engineer's supposed to be doing? Are we paying the engineer to do what we've already paid the city inspectors and engineers to do? So essentially, we'd be double billed for the same process, and I don't see this as being fair or an efficient use of resources. And it's a little bit hard also to determine what your costs are going to be going into this. Obviously, engineer's time is very expensive, and if you've got him down in there in the ditches doing inspections as you go through the process, then it's going to be cost prohibitive to even do anything with it. Third issue's going to be under 5.6, which requires the upgrades of substandard streets and utilities in the front of any development. The concern with this is going to be this provision would result in an unlawful exaction. Current U.S. Supreme Court standard for exactions was established in Dolan versus the City of Tigard, and in that case, the court held that before an exaction may be imposed, it must be proportional, this is the important part, proportional to the impact of the new Where a condition of development approval involves the construction of improvements that are not in proportion with the development's anticipated impact, the dull and rough proportionality test is not met, and a regulatory taking occurs. Most importantly on this issue is that the burden of proving that an exaction is proportional will fall on the municipality. This is something that's surely to be challenged. Give you sort of an extreme example, but it will eventually happen. If a farmer owns a thousand-foot of road frontage, and he's going to give an acre to one of his children, then he is, now he's subdivided his land, and he falls under these regulations, and he's responsible for upgrading these streets to the major thoroughfare plan, so suddenly this two-lane road, he's responsible to pay to make it a five-lane road. Upgrade curbs, got to install curbs, gutters, sidewalks, all new utilities. If the water department, essentially the way this is written, if the water department decides that they don't want the six-inch water line, now they want a 24-inch water line, and they want it over there, then it's the farmer's responsibility. So we've got to become quite a bit more specific on this also. I can't see that this is going to fly also. Now, we've talked quite a bit about the sidewalks, so I'm going to be brief with that. Under 5.7.13, requiring the sidewalks to be installed by the developer in the initial stages of construction before the home is built. From a practical standpoint, it just won't work. You know, we all want to be smart and efficient and environmentally friendly, and this requirement doesn't meet any of them. Essentially, what you're doing is you've got your sidewalk installed, you're going to start construction on the house, so you've got to remove a section of sidewalk so that you can get a driveway and get the delivery trucks in. Then after you've poured the driveway back, you've got to tear out a section of sidewalk over here to get the dump trucks in to bring in the topsoil. Then during construction, you're going to tear out the center of the sidewalk to get to the sewer tap, which is up under there. So, and if any of these are not done, then you can bet that that sidewalk is going to fail sometime point down the road. It might be three years, five years, 10 years, but whose responsibility then is it going to be to come back and fix it because the dump trucks drove over the sidewalk or the sidewalk was undercut to get to the sewer tap? So I think from a practical standpoint, that's just not going to work, and I think that the system we have now, as the house is built and you're finishing up and working your way out to the street, just pour the sidewalk, and you get one continuous pour that's uniform, and it's durable, and hasn't been compromised at all. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Avery-Water. Would you state your address for the record, please?
2100 Cheatham Springs Road.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I'm just going to talk in general about the subdivision regulations that we have.
Mr. Cantrell, would you state your name, please?
Yeah, Rick Cantrell, 1431 Margaret Close, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I'd just like to make a few comments in general about the process that we're going to be going through now, and I'm not going to refer to, the very first step of it is the, with the preliminary plat and having a master plan, and then making sure that it conforms substantially. No problem with doing that, but just if it does deviate from it, I'd like to be able for that process to include that you can make the amendment with your preliminary plat at the same time as you're amending the overall master plan, so I'm not having to come back, you know, multiple times before you, and, you know, one meeting for the amendment and one meeting for the preliminary, and then back through again. And I've made these comments to Joseph, but I just wanted to get him into the record and let y'all be aware of some of my concerns. There's a requirement in there on the front end, you've got to submit the stormwater management plan. I'm not sure when y'all see the preliminary plat, if that's the appropriate time to do that or not. It seems like it should come much later as you're doing the construction plans and submit that with your construction plans because there may be some changes that you may want to make in that stormwater management plan regarding your borrow areas and your fill areas, because you are going to have to identify that, from what I understand, on your preliminary plat as you come through. You're going to have to say, I'm going to put waste material there, or I'm going to take material from this other location on the property. So that's going to be necessary for us to do. We have a process in here also where that now, before we begin construction, you all are going to have to approve our final plat. I know I deal with some communities that do that same process, and it's always back and forth. Sometimes they require, it's in their regs, but they don't always require it. Don't necessarily have a problem with it, but you will probably be seeing those things come back through again. There might be some alterations to drainage easements on those final plats and that sort of thing. Hopefully, those things can come on through and just be under consent agenda items when you're just making minor modifications instead of having to come through, you know, make another presentation to you about why I'm having to change it. It's just the nature of the beast, sometimes that happens to you. Once the construction plans have been reviewed by the staff, there's process in there about having a 90-day or 60-day review process, and if in that 60 days, you get your comments back and you respond, you agree to everything they've done, I hope that that 60 days doesn't start again. Okay? So if I get my comments back on the 51st day, that I'm not now subject to another 60 days, so actually, I'm 111 days into the process, even though I agreed to everything that staff I'm a little bit concerned about the, I'm not, the engineer certificate of completion, they just need to be enumerated about what you want. It's just, it just says that, and no one can, has been able to identify me point by point what they want in that. One day, staff member A may say, that's not acceptable, and later, staff member B may say, that is acceptable what's been turned in. So I'd like to have some consistency with that. Not really sure that I deal with any jurisdictions that require that same ingredient. We do some as-bills for the sewer department and for the water department, but not, you know, not on storm drainage, and so I just don't know what's included in that. Are they going to come out and measure, you know, is the catch basin in the correct location, or did we change it because that was the lowest point that somehow or another didn't get, you know, shown up on the drawings correctly, or we had to change the grade? Sometimes you do change the grade. If you get into an undercut situation, instead of filling that undercut all the way back up, you may keep it down low and maybe change your low point, so you're trying to save money on filling back on the undercut situation. There's also a provision there where the staff is going to review the HOA documents, which is fine, just as long as we can get them in and out and, you know, not say, well, you should have done so-and-so with the HOA documents, and you're going back to the attorney and saying, I've got to change my HOA docs to include this now, and then I'm slowed down once again for whatever period of time it takes to amend that. And I believe that is the gist of my comments for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Anybody else?
My name's Mark Wood. I live at 3972 Roland Road. I'm president-elect of the Home Builder Association. What I'd like to say tonight, we're here speaking with one voice. With that being said, unlike Mr. Avery-Water, who's lived here all of his life, I moved here in 2000 from Johnson City, Tennessee. The home builders in Johnson City fought this battle in 1994 in East Tennessee. The biggest problem we had was the topo where the land's not level like it is here. But the city did allow us in Johnson City to put the sidewalks in after the end of construction, and the planning department did put off the inspections to the building department, which made it easier on the builder to build the houses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anybody else? Seeing nobody come forward? Excuse me. Mr. Cross, I'd like to drop the hammer on you there, sorry.
Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Paul Cross, 4812 Nina Marie Avenue, Murfreesboro. I want to say that I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, but I especially appreciate the work that the staff has done and the method that they have gone at this process in terms of involving as many people as they could. They have literally begged us for input and been gracious and helpful in going through these changes and listened to things that we've had to say. I sent in just a few comments early on in the process, and I've got several more now, but I'm not going to go over those tonight because I know they'll be handled by the staff and the ones that need to come to your attention will. There are two or three things that concern me, I suppose, and not in a, not so much in a specific sense, but I'm able to look at this from the point of view of having been a government administrator and now being on the dark side of that role. So when I look at these things, I'd really try to understand how it can benefit both parties, and that's some of the concern that I have. I think that the Planning Commission needs to take the time to consider these regulation changes and the relative cost of implementing some of the changes within the context of other costs and demands placed on development by other city and county departments of utilities, and more importantly, consider them in the context of the current economic environment. For example, this is not true throughout the city, but there are parts of the city now where sewer taps are $4,800, water taps are $2,800. You've got a $1,500 development tax, so that's $9,100 for a single-family home, and you have not even driven a stake in the ground. Everything that we do from a regulatory point of view costs money. So when we see things like deciding that we're going to do sidewalks on both sides of the street instead of just one side, that's a cause of concern. When we see a change that says that we will now provide wiring for Comcast When we see a change that says that we will now provide wiring for Comcast and AT&amp;T that the development community will install that, that's a problem. Those are profit-making businesses. Now, we provide the water lines and the sewer lines and the power lines, but those are all utilities that operate for the general public and we are all stakeholders in those utilities and we understand that. I do not understand why we should put in phone lines for AT&amp;T or why we should put in cable for Comcast. Now, we've never been able to get AT&amp;T to agree to do anything or Bell South or whatever. They won't even bother to show up and talk to you about what they want. They insist on coming in after the fact and tearing everything up after you've got it finished. We've tried every way in the world to work with them and it doesn't work. We have reached a very common sense arrangement with Comcast, I'm speaking for myself, in the developments that we do, that because we're opening a trench for the utility lines, they actually just pay us to put their conduit in there with it. It costs them a whole lot less than it will to come out and put their own in. And they pay for it and we cut the cost of that going in because we facilitate it within our existing process. So please, don't put something in there that's going to cause me to pay for something that I'm getting a utility to pay for now. That's not going to help our situation. I think these regulations should be the foundation for clarity of communications between the government and the private sector. I would suggest that adding some definitions to the regulations, you've got a nice listing of definitions and very much like Jim Everwater, I'm a little concerned. I think we needed to either add definitions for timely manner, expeditious, and none necessarily, or just take them out altogether and try to find more concrete ways of expressing what we want there. The tighter the language is, the more specific it is, the better off we're all going to be. I want it to be tight. I want for there not to be wiggle room. And I don't want to have any wiggle room either, to be honest with you. I'm particularly concerned about Section 3.6, which allows the city engineer, and we all know how hard it is to get along with Chris Griffith. It enables the city engineer to make changes in the design plans during construction if, and this is a semi-accurate quote, "actual field conditions not anticipated by the construction plans are found to exist." I get along with Chris real well. I don't know who his successor may be in 15 or 20 or 50 years. This assumes that the person who's in that position is going to be reasonable. I'm not sure that's a good assumption. I think that I would like to see that language tightened down. There are unforeseen conditions that come up in any kind of construction, whether it's below ground, above ground, and most contractual situations have a means of addressing that in some manner. But what bothers me is that it says "actual conditions." And what are the actual conditions that could trigger the authority of a city engineer or his delegate or whoever to come in and say, "I've changed my mind about these approved plans. I want this ditch to be this way. I want it to be five feet wider and six feet deeper." And I think it would better be served if that process provided for the consultation between the design engineer and the contractor and the city engineer. Or at least we try to define somewhere the types of actual conditions that would trigger the right of an official to come in and just make a wholesale change in a project that you already budgeted and planned and so forth. In the same vein, I'm a little concerned about when we deal with substandard conditions, substandard infrastructure. Doesn't matter whether it's a street or whether it's a sewer or water line or whatever it is. If we're going to be responsible in the development community to correct something that's there, I think it would be helpful if we had at least some sort of example as to what substandard is. If we know what standard is, so obviously substandard is somewhere under that. So if we're planning a project and we understand that this roadway has been there for a while, but we don't necessarily understand that because of what we're doing, it needs to be upgraded. I think it would help on the early phase of development planning if we had some sense of what the powers that be are going to consider something to be substandard as opposed to once we're in the process and then we discover it. And then the last thing that I want to bring up is just, I'd like to see, this is just an example of the kind of situation that is difficult to deal with in terms of ambiguity and things not being defined. Under Section 3, master planning, I invite you to look at item number 30 on page 22. This is a list of 30 things that you have to supply to the city when you're in the master planning phase. 29 of them are pretty easy to figure out. But when you get to 30, any other additional information that may be needed by the Planning Commission, planning staff, or city engineer to evaluate the compatibility of the property. That's a tall order and a lot of room for getting your master plan together and showing up with it and finding out that there's a whole bunch of other stuff that somebody wanted. And appreciate your time and enjoy working with your staff.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. We'll direct the staff to be expeditious in their researching these terminology, okay? Would anybody else like to come forward and speak? All in and all done? Public hearing is closed. Any comments from members of the Planning Commission? Mr. Adelot, do you have any comments?
Yes, I have a couple. And I may ask one of my staff members to expeditiously come up here and speak for a moment, but I said it in jest. I appreciate the input and I appreciate the written comments, the spoken comments tonight, and the people who've involved themselves in the process. I find I do my best work when I have other people helping me to do it. And this work is, the help I'm receiving are by the people I'm going to be working with over the course of the next several years. So that's something I do appreciate. Well, a couple of things I want to, I want to maybe touch bases on tonight, and that is about this engineer certification. And that's one issue that I think, I would like to ask Mr. Huddleston, Sam Huddleston with the city, to maybe step up and articulate what he wants to see in the engineer certification. I think he is the most relevant person at this point because while Mr. Griffith is his supervisor as city engineer, Mr. Huddleston does most of the time, spends a lot of his time working with subdivisions. And he and I have spent a lot of time trying to figure out, well, exactly what is that we wanted to have? Now, we determined a long time ago that an as-built drawing by an engineer would be wonderful, but not practical, and it may not get us where we want to be. What we want is that we get good construction of infrastructure. We would like something that will actually help the developer. And we don't want to have something that's going to add cost to the developer that's unnecessary. So with that, I'm going to ask Sam to kind of go over that in 25 words or less if he's able to do it.
Are you going to be expeditious?
We will be expeditious. Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. We are looking for the engineer and the developer to put systems in place that would monitor the construction, the major elements of the subdivision, and then be able to provide us information back on that, that it was constructed in accordance with the approved plans and city specifications. And that's it in 25 words or less. That's got a lot in it, but that's what we're looking for.
You know, I think the staff has made it very clear that they want to work with the development community and other interested parties to make this work for everybody, the city and the public in general. So it's not going to be an overnight thing. It's going to be a process. And I have full confidence that all the parties can get together and make it work. Anything else, Mr. Huddleston?
Yes, and, you know, we rely on the consulting engineers that work for these developers and their professional judgments. We rely on them to carry out their responsibilities to the public as licensed engineers. And we value their judgment and their opinion. You know, we do work with these engineers day in and day out. And so probably more so than me or anyone else on city staff, they know what they intended. They know what their plans were intended to achieve or accomplish, the engineering intent, the design intent. And so we're looking for them to bring some of that to the field and make sure what they intended is actually what gets constructed. And that's, and there's a lot in that, I understand, but that's the direction, we need that to go. I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Huddleston, one of the comments and reoccurring theme was the definitions and the vagueness in that. Can we, in item 30, you know, there's a lot of clause and whatever needs else to be done. That is sort of vague, and I'm being a little vague also, but we do need to tighten up some of these definitions so it's clear for everybody. As Mr. Cross says, he's willing to do anything that's in the requirement and the less wiggle room there is and the less vagueness. So I don't know exactly what every vagueness is, but we do, we have to tighten those up to make it clear so they can follow the rules like they intend to do and what they want to do. Keeping in mind that everything the interest meter is running all the time.
Absolutely. And in writing these regulations, we want to consider where we've been, we want to consider where we're at, and we want to anticipate where we're going. And so it's difficult at times to put specifics into situations that we can't even anticipate. The regulations we're working from now were mostly drafted in '74, as I recall. Mr. Adelot may nod in affirmation there. And they couldn't anticipate where we are just 30 years later, and we can see some of the difficulties about that. So we do understand the need for specifics, but we also want to write a regulation that can be a document that endures time for us a little bit, that goes beyond the current issues of the day, whether they be economic or conservation or whatever, and sets up a good process for us to see the orderly development of our community. And so sometimes we need a little bit of that vagueness in there to communicate an intent and maybe don't tie it down to a specific so that we can get what we need to see as a community, whether that's today, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now.
Mr. Young, members of the Planning Commission, and on that matter of definitions and terminology, as we work on these regulations, we have a tendency to be trying to anticipate how these are going to apply. But even at the, no matter how we try, we can never be in the other side. We are with the city, but we're not the developers, but we work with developers. So it's interesting, when they repeat back this phrase to us, well, when they say it, all of a sudden it sounds a little different than we were saying it to ourselves. So I appreciate, you know, hearing that kind of input. When I was thinking, well, timely manner, that sounds awful. I know it when I see it. I'm familiar with what that is. So now that I'm hearing, well, timely manner, I don't know what that is. Well, maybe we do need to step back on some of that. And hearing it from them helps me to do a better job to be able to help them in the future.
And I think too, anytime you can try to be more specific, it allows it to be more consistent, that you are dealing with the same items every time and it's not, it's not being changed. The rules of the game aren't being changed, you know, the next development that you're looking at. And so anytime it can be more specific, then I think it lends itself to be more consistent.
We're going to work on that. Another matter I want to touch on while I'm speaking is the matter of substandard streets and the improvements along those. I appreciate Mr. Everwater's comments. I've heard similar comments from Mr. Swanson early on during the process. What we have provided in this subdivision regulations is very close to what is currently in our subdivision regulations that we've been using for, since, actually that was added in the late 1980s. And what we've experienced in this community, like many communities, the street network, where a lot of old farm-to-market roads that we've annexed into, and they're substandard for the automobile age. They worked very good when they were mules and wagons and people drove at a reasonable speed and there weren't that many people on them. But nowadays, when we start getting cars on them, it's quite a different situation. So as we've annexed property, often the annexation is, we're invited to do the annexation by the person who's going to be developing the property. They request the property to be annexed. And think about it, Osborne Lane is a wonderful example. When Osborne, when the city annexed Osborne Lane, there were places where the road was 12-foot wide. I remember the testimony from the neighbors about the street being so narrow, the school buses would bang their mirrors. Had to be real careful to drive so slow that they would be able to pull off of the road on to what little shoulder they was. But we were asked to annex it that way by the developer of the Hampton subdivision. He had an opportunity to develop it. So we had to look at a way to improve it. Often, we're not quite prepared to see a comprehensive upgrade, but rather than requiring a developer to pay for the whole road, that would not be fair, we are very confident in our ability to ask that he participate in the improvement of his frontage on his side of the road. We're not asking him to build both sides of the road, just the frontage. Now, the example that Mr. Everwater gave of the farmer with the big lot or big farm and sell off one lot to his poor child, that seems awful wholesome and wonderful and mama, apple pie, hot dogs, and Fourth of July and that kind of thing. And I know about that because I deal with people who've come in with exactly that kind of circumstance from time to time. We don't want to penalize them, and that seems to be an awful big exaction. So maybe we can be a little more specific as to how that can kick in. But then again, I want to tell you, and I don't mean to pick a fight with our agrarian industry or agriculture industry, but the farmers are a dying breed and often today he's a gentleman farmer, tomorrow he's that son of a gun that's sewed off to the developer. And the developer gets that opportunity. So the developer might would like Mr. Farmer doing it, but that's an argument for another day. And one of these days when I write my book, I'll include a chapter about the humorous events I've had in that regard.
Aren't you a farmer of sorcery?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. Gilli, I think you have a question.
Just a couple of comments I want to make, Chairman Lamb. First, I appreciate the points of view that our guests have made tonight as well as Sam's. And I think perhaps maybe instead of focusing on how specific versus vague we make things, where our focus may need to be is the balance that we need to strike between clear expectations and flexibility may be a better perspective to look at on that. We've put a lot of time and effort into getting to where we're at with this right now and it's going to take considerable more time before we get a working document that everyone's going to be happy with. But given what we've seen so far tonight and the comments have been made, I think we're well on our way to that.
Chairman Lamb, I do have one more comment that I would like to make, servant summary from myself. The people who spoke tonight, we're going to try to keep you in our database, certainly before we come back to the Planning Commission, we'll try to make sure that we include them in some discussions. We may be able to accommodate everybody with everything. We may not be, but at least they'll be able to participate in what we do.
Okay. Mr. Huddleston, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
There's nothing else to be said about that? We need a motion to defer that, Mr. Adelot?
I would appreciate one.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. We'll move on to Platts and Plans. We have five items under Platts and Plans this evening, first of which is Regal Square, final plat for 17 lots on 12.68 acres, Zone PCD, located along Regal Drive and Memorial Boulevard, HDK Partners Development. Ms. Logan, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Lamb.
I noticed while ago when Mr. Adelot said he makes better decisions when he has somebody helping him, and you were nodding your head. I just wanted to point that out. I think that's probably subliminal on your part. Tell us about Regal Square.
I'm sure he'd tell you the same about me. The first item for you this evening is a final plat for 17 commercial lots located along Memorial Boulevard, south of Cedar V Drive. You all have reviewed the preliminary plat for this. You all have reviewed the preliminary plat for this, and this final plat is in good order. We've asked the engineer, and they've already done so, to modify one of the notes concerning the fact that each of these lots must comply with our new stormwater quality ordinance. And we want to make sure that whoever is proceeding to buy these lots is aware of those ordinance requirements because it can possibly affect their overall development plans. Other than that, and the engineer's already worked to revise that note, this plat's in good order.
Any questions?
Move approval, subject staff comments.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next item is Randy Fan's site plan of forty-eight hundred and forty-eight square feet, point six three acres, zone commercial highway along Manny Avenue. Randy Fan is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This site plan for a new commercial building is located along South Manny Avenue. It is at the corner of South Manny and Castle Street. The Board of Zoning Appeals approved a thirty-six-foot variance from the minimum required forty-two foot front setback for the principal structures at their meeting on November twenty-fourth of two thousand and eight. They've also approved a waiver of the five-foot side yard plan through north. I would like to state that the reason for that variance request, because it may seem excessive, is because of the Manny Avenue plan and what the future design intents are for that and the vision is to bring those buildings closer to the street and moving forward to the street. And so that's what this plan does. This site plan is for a new commercial building. You have the proposed architecture in front of you tonight. It looks like this. It's a commercial, all-brick building. It has a very traditional approach to the design with very classic lines in the architecture. And staff feels like this is very much what the plan envisioned for the future development on Manny Avenue. As you can see, the building has been brought forward to really speak to the street and to create that streetscape that we want to see for that area of our town. And by doing that, it really makes it more of a neighborhood feel because you have the safety of the buildings and you have just the way the streetscape is located, it really makes it more of what we would envision for a walkable community in that area. In terms of the site plan, the applicant would have to, of course, do a subdivision plat, which must be recorded prior to any permits. A surveyor will be required to lay out the fittings for this because it is a small site and because of the variances that were granted, we don't want to take any chances. We want to make sure that it's built exactly according to the plan. So a surveyor will be required to lay out the fittings. And the landscape plan is subject to the final review by the city horticulturist, Ms. Cynthia Holloway, prior to any permits. They have made some changes to their landscaping plan in an attempt to address her comments, but she has not had an opportunity to review the revised plans that came in yesterday. And we just ask that she has final review authority over the landscape plans.
And I have one more comment. Mr. Fan did make an opportunity to visit with the Main Street organization so that the, a design committee could have a chance to look over the plans. I think they were very pleased with what they were seeing. They felt that that was very compatible with the Main Street program for Manny Avenue.
I want to thank Mr. Fan for his efforts in this project right here. I think that's exactly, and Mr. Young and Mr. Gilli might speak to it better than me, what the city council and the mayor had in mind for this area of town as far as redevelopment goes. So hopefully this will spur some additional redevelopment in that area. Any other questions or comments?
I hope this is the first of many projects we see to upgrade the Manny Avenue area. And I'm glad to see Main Street involved in this too because that'll bring another set of opportunities to the table with that.
I agree wholeheartedly.
If there's no other comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next item, super speed wash, site plan for twenty-nine hundred and one square feet on one point three three acres, zone PUD located along Highway ninety-six and Hillwood Boulevard, HCT Investments LLC is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This site plan is for a new automatic car washing facility located along the northern side of Franklin Road or also known as Highway ninety-six, just west of the Hillwood development or part of the Hillwood development, but the westernmost point. The site plan that is before you tonight has been revised to incorporate staff's comments. They will be entering from a joint access that's to be shared with the adjoining property owner to the east coming into the site. They will have an opportunity for two pay stations, and then they will enter the core wash, and then they will also have a bypass lane. And the design that's before you tonight, the architectural design, is the same that was presented to you as part of the PUD amendment that was required for this site prior to the site plan ever coming before you. The applicants have also worked with staff on their canopy design, and it's, a copy of it is in front of you tonight. And it's going to be a pitched roof canopy, the same type canopies that you see at the gasoline stations, brick columns with the ephes accents and the metal pitched roof. And the roof will be of a khaki color. Originally, they had, way back when, when this went through your plan development, they've shown a red roof, but we've since worked with them and modified it to more of a khaki caramel color for the roof of the, for the roof of the pitched, the canopies for the vacuums. They've also shown their screen barrier wall that's going to be composed of brick and block in order to try to make sure that because of the location of the facility adjacent to the Blackman Farm subdivision, we wanted to ensure that what is now the model home, which will someday be someone's personal residence, has proper screening from there, from the noise. It's not a very loud facility according to developer, but there was some noise. And so they're showing a brick sound barrier wall as well as the landscaping that's required. And if you recall, as part of your rezoning for the PUD amendment, you require them to maintain a thirty-foot distance from the side property line, which is more than what is normally seen in these commercial developments. So at this point, the site plan appears to be in good order, unless you have any other questions.
Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir.
How tall is that, the wall?
The wall is eight feet.
Eight feet tall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does it meet the necessary thirty feet requirements?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Ready for a motion?
Move for approval, subject staff comment.
Second motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item D, the Mervisboro Missionary Baptist Church, a site plan for sixty-seven hundred and thirty square feet on three, thirty-nine hundred and ninety-five, three point nine nine five acres. That's getting down to the thousandth there. Zone PUD located along Fortress Boulevard, Mervisboro Missionary Baptist Church is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This site plan for a place of worship is located along Fortress Boulevard and is part of the Victory Station PUD. The Victory Station PUD did allow for the use of place of worship for this property when it was approved, so this is in conformance with the PUD. Also, the design and the site plan for this PUD must be approved by the overall developer for this PUD, which is the Swanson family, and they have already reviewed this plan and have approved it subject to coming before the planning commission. In terms of the actual site plan itself, it appears to be in good order. They have worked with the staff on addressing our comments and will, and have worked also with our environmental engineer in terms of their stormwater quality. They have a site that they have intentionally, I think, kind of built closer to the front and left room in the back for future expansion. They can either add on to their building and move their parking to the back, but they have quite a bit of land that is not being utilized at this point of green space that's being left towards the back part of their lot, which would allow for future expansion as they grow into the site. In terms of the design of the property, the proposal is an all-brick building and the, you should have a colored rendering in front of you tonight, as well as the actual architectural elevations. They're showing a brick front and as you'll see, a stained glass window feature is the main facade, and that projects towards Fortress Boulevard. The steeple that is shown on the building is an alternate at this time. The church is, of course, as everyone is trying to see what the cost implications of building this facility will be, and it may be that the steeple will not be initially put on to the church. They're going to, I think, pretty much wait and see how their bid comes back on the church facility and see if there's room in there to incorporate the steeple. However, the roof design will be such that if they come back at a later date to add the steeple, that it will be added. So at that time, so I just wanted you to know that that is an alternate at this time and is not a set-in-stone feature. Otherwise, unless you have questions about the architecture of the building, the site plan is in good order and they've addressed the majority of staff comments.
Any questions? No, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval, subject staff comment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Cason Lane Church of Christ, site plan for twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-seven square feet on six point zero three acres, zone RS twelve and RS fifteen, located along Cason Lane. Cason Lane Church of Christ is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The final site plan before you this evening is in addition to the existing place of worship facility located along Cason Lane, and it's just north of Wellington Place. It's an existing church, and I think it was built maybe in ninety-nine. And at the time, they had planned to do an addition, and as time has moved forward, they're finally at the point where they're ready to grow into that addition. They're looking at an addition that will practically double the size of their facility. And this property had to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals at their last meeting in December to discuss the expansion of the special use permit. And it was approved subject to a couple of conditions. And those conditions were that they install a type C buffer along the northwest and south property lines, and also that the portables that are on site there must be removed within eighteen months. And we have incorporated those same conditions as part of your site plan approval this evening. Their site plan is in good order. However, Ms. Holloway has not had an opportunity to review the final design of the landscape plan because that condition happened after they'd already submitted the planning commission. So we would just ask that any approvals tonight or subject to Ms. Holloway and her staff have an opportunity to review and approve the final landscape plan to ensure that it conforms to the type C buffer yard requirements.
I have a hypothetical question.
Yes, sir.
In a situation where you've got portable buildings that will be removed in a reasonable length of time, how do we work the landscaping around those? I mean, in a hypothetical situation?
Well, usually your portable building should meet your building setback lines requirements, and your landscaping is usually beyond that. So usually, there shouldn't be a conflict in terms of where you want to install your landscaping in relation to the actual placement of your portable buildings.
So we don't rip out stuff that's just now beginning to grow well down the road?
No, we shouldn't.
Okay. Thank you.
If anything, we would ask them, I mean, if we ever get in those situations, we would want to ask them to try to save those plans and reuse them somewhere else on site. And I know Ms. Holloway has done that in several situations because we don't ever want to just, you know, do anything to cause harm to the landscape materials.
And/or increase excess costs.
No, of course not. If there's any way they can use existing materials on site, we would encourage them to do so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Is the, I just, I tried even with the magnifying glass over there. Is this the existing building that kind of comes out this way?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. You know what's happening.
Towards the street.
We're going to get a full size one out so that you can look at it if you need it.
Sorry.
Ms. Young?
This copy we have is so detailed, it's rather hard to pick out anything.
We love the size and being able to deal with it up here, but I apologize. I just, I couldn't tell, and I don't see that we have any type of drawing really that shows us the... Thank you.
Just to clarify, the addition will be located at the back of the building, and they've got, and they're just basically going to start a firewall and bring back the addition. And it's going to be all brick, and it's going to match in roof eve height, I mean, roof pitch, eve height, et cetera. So you won't go by and have a, you know, you don't want your roof pitches to not match or your eve heights to stand taller, and that won't be the situation on this. But it is at the back of the building. And it was shown on their original site plan, you know, and it just was, almost like as a phase two.
Okay. Thank you.
What was the original phase then? We're going to carry this, this addition is twenty thousand square feet?
Total, the building total now will be twenty thousand square feet.
That is the present plus the addition?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The addition is right around ten thousand. As I said, they're about, they're doubling their size pretty much.
If there's no more questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move approval, subject staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That completes the Platts and Plans portion of our agenda. I'd like to thank everybody that came tonight, by the way. Staff reports another business. I've got one item on here, I understand you're going to take care of that for us, proposed amendments to the sign ordinance, your favorite thing, regarding flag signs and flag poles, the planning staff, and the codes it says is happening. Shouldn't we put the legal department in there too, ma'am?
No.
No. We speak for them once in a while, but we would rarely be the applicant for an amendment. Code staff has found over the last, I guess, about a year of working with the flag pole permit process after we had amended the ordinance a little over a year ago, that requiring a flag pole permit for a flag pole to be constructed erected on the single-family and two-family residences is simply not serving much of a useful purpose. So they would like to eliminate that requirement of a permit in advance of installing a flag pole for single-family homes and effectively duplexes, zero-lot line homes. The circumstances that these are generally owner occupants that are wanting to put up a flag pole and that the permit process is simply not serving much of a purpose and probably causing far more ill will than it is good in terms of regulating these flag poles, which really, we've found, don't really require regulation. Now, they will still be regulated in terms of there is a maximum height, depending on the zoning district that you live in, just like there's a maximum height to your house. There'll still be setback requirements from the right-of-way and from utility poles, or from utilities and utility lines, particularly electric lines. But the permit process just doesn't seem to be adding anything to our, to the process, and so code staff would like to eliminate that. So the first two provisions would, because there's two places where it's mentioned in the current ordinance, would exempt then single-family and two-family residences from the requirement of an advanced permit to install a flag pole. The third part of the ordinance is, I think many of you are aware, probably all of you are aware, there's been a proposal to do a memorial and commemorative event around the Memorial Day time this spring. It's the kind of an event that no one had in mind at the time we were drafting the flag and flag pole regulations. It's certainly the kind of event that the community wants to have happen, and there's certainly no regulatory reason to not have such an event, although it would not be allowed under our current flag regulations. So the, again, the third part of this ordinance would create the situation where for a temporary event that is, that receives Board of Zoning Appeals approval as a temporary event, that there'd be an unlimited number of non-commercial flags allowed in connection with such an event. Currently, it'd be a maximum of three per lot. The event that is being contemplated would have substantially more than that, and staff wants to do what we need to do to facilitate having that event. And staff wants to do what we need to do to facilitate having that event, which I think will be an excellent event for our community. This is, as amendment to the sign ordinance, does need to have a public hearing, and we would ask that it, recommend it be set for a public hearing for our February meeting, which is the fourth, February 4th. February 4th. Where there'd been some discussion of trying to put it on our next, on our afternoon meeting, but we felt that this is a matter that is, would be best at the evening meeting where there's more opportunity for people to appear and comment if they choose to do so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we set a public hearing February 4th. Second motion.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That completes the staff reports, as far as I know. Mr. Adelot, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir. I have something that I'd like to ask you to consider for mandatory review. It's a very small item, but it's still mandatory, all the same. Mr. Jekyll, would you hand these out, please? World Outreach Church is under construction. They have discovered that an easement will, a sewer easement, and you're going to see this in a second, you're going to wonder what, you're going to need your magnifying glass, and you would even on the full-size drawing, that there's an area of about .005 acres, maybe .005 acres, that a corner of it that encroaches into a, where the building sits. So the building will overlap into the sewer easement. And from a, I guess, a standpoint of getting things right, they want to have us quick-clam back that portion of the easement. Water and Sewers looked at it, they're going to take it to the Water and Sewer Board, but they're all, they're fine with it. Because I found out about it this afternoon, I'm bringing it to you tonight so that we can make sure we get this done before, in an expeditious manner. I guess I'm going to overuse that word, but I am trying to move that pretty quickly. So if you look, you see it says easement area being removed, and that's on the far side of your drawing. You may need your magnifying glass, it's very small.
Is it because the building encroaches on the easement?
Pardon?
The building encroaches on the easement?
Yeah, the building actually builds, well, the easement is over into the building. The building is over that part of the easement. Just a very small part. So we need to take a formal mandatory review to, so we can quick-clam it back so that we take care of the problem. And I would suggest we do so. I don't see a problem with this.
That's obviously a very.
Any questions?
Very reasonable request, and I think it's great we're starting our first meeting of the year off with three church projects. I think it's great for our community. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Well put. Mr. Adelot, anything else, sir?
No, that's our head.
Okay. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.